First part of this owner's rep process for the Mill District. Second part, you might recall is more focused on design phase and concept designs and kind of the marketing strategy, but this first part has been just really reviewing our redevelopment study from AME consultants, affirming some of that information, following up on some of it, gathering feedback and input from key stakeholders as we move through this process. So, we're going to turn it over to IAG Commercial. They'll take us through this and welcome for open dialogue as we go through.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, City Council members and staff, thank you for inviting us here tonight. Let's see if I can get this to stay a little bit anyway. Well, maybe not. I'll let it rest in my pocket, how's that? Okay. I don't know. Try this.
Duct tape.
There we go. Okay, can you hear me okay with that?
Yep.
Thank you. Well, my name is, as Anna said, my name is Jeff LaFavor with IAG Commercial and I'm happy to be a part of this tonight. Our team took it upon ourselves to really see what is it like if we own this parcel of land, what would we do? How do we help the city of Sartell through this whole process, trying to figure out what is the best thing, the best way to develop this land? And so, we've taken that to heart and we've dug very deep into that process with our team. We've had a wonderful team, I've been excited to work with them. Some of them I knew better than others, but it has been wonderful because we needed certain skillsets that we didn't have just within IAG Commercial. We've teamed up with ISG on the civil engineering side, we've teamed up with Thrive to help with a lot of the city approval and the incentives and so forth. That is the expertise that Rand works in a lot. You'll hear more from her, she has a strong city background and happy to work with them and they've been wonderful to work with. So, thank you guys so much. I'm going to advance my slide, you'll see some of these people, I suppose that's why we created some of these slides. So, you see who's part of it. Zach, who's been part of our team and he's really been the project manager on this, making sure that we all see on task, he's done a wonderful job of that. Mitchell and Danielle, Mitchell is not here with us tonight, but both with ISG and then Breann Kennedy with Thrive. We're going to talk about our observations on the site tonight. We're going to talk about all the different things that we've found, both from a challenges standpoint and from an opportunity standpoint. We're going to give you some recommendations. We very much want this to be a work, because it is a draft, we want this to be kind of a working session to some respects. We're planning on about a 30-minute, we understand we have an hour, we're planning about a 30-minute presentation and we wanted to leave the last half hour, if that's okay, for a discussion. We want you to feel free to have that discussion with us and challenge our thoughts. All of that is pretty much welcome tonight and really want to encourage that open dialogue tonight. In being engaged by the city of Sartell and Anna and her team, they really said, "We want you to take a look at this as a development opportunity. What does it look like? There's some things that we don't want, we don't want heavy industrial on the site again, but take a look at it, don't rule out anything and give us all the opportunities. Talk to the stakeholders that are involved in a decision like this. Help us figure this site out." And so, we've done that and we'll get into that tonight and talk about all the different people that we have discussed in detail, experienced people, people that come from development from all different aspects, from office, from multifamily, from retail, from industrial. We've really tried to cover the gamut in the people we've talked to on this project. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Breann Kennedy, we'll take the rest of, or take this portion of the presentation and then she'll turn it over to Danielle.
Thanks Jeff, now the microphone's really high. Thanks Mayor, members of the council. Very happy to be here tonight. Again, Breann Kennedy, I'm with Thrive and we specialize in connecting communities to the abundance in the economy, particularly for development, through development support. So, as Jeff outlined, there were, there are really three phases of this scope. This particular report tonight is related to our listen, we really listened, we learned, we interpreted. So, I am in charge of reporting on the listen and learn portion of this presentation. And so, you'll see on the slide all the stakeholders that we've reached out to. So, you have the base work of a concept plan, a vision for the site. And so, this first portion of the work was to fact-check it with the implementers. So, as a city, you are one of many people who are in, involved in implementing visions and plans and development. And so, these are all the others and you'll see on that screen, there's regulators and developers, implementers. So, there's people who put restrictions on development and guidelines and guideposts and then there's people there who try to work through those to get things done. And so, you'll see the longest list up there are the developers and investors. We really wanted to get a broad perspective from the development community and like Jeff said, we talked to retailers, housing, multifamily, single family, we talked to solar, we talked to light industrial developers and we talked to local developers as well as twin cities and national developers. We really wanted to make sure that we were leaving no stone unturned and we also talked to businesses, so a little bit more on the potential user side. So, developers can talk in theory, but users can talk more about their daily needs and what, and specifically if they might be interested in this site. So, I think we did got a really broad perspective as we talked to people. So, the next three slides will really be about what we heard. And then Danielle's going to tell us what does it mean and how are we using our professional interpretation? And then we'll end with listening, hearing from you on your thoughts and finalizing the next steps. So, this is what we heard. These are our observations in both walking the site, but mostly from what we heard from the stakeholders. So, we have done some preliminary analysis and seen with our own eyes and made some observations, but really we wanted to root our report out on what we've heard from others. And this is staff too, but mostly the community stakeholders that we interviewed. And so, this is what we heard and I'm not going to read through each and every one of these because they're up here on the slide, but the biggest one, and this is not surprising, is that there is extensive multiple acres of concrete, multiple feet deep. That is a major barrier to development on this site. And while there may be some opportunities associated with that, with the reuse, it will require grinding and reusing as base. And so, there's very limited, if any, opportunity to reuse the existing foundations, particularly for uses like, well, for, for buildings, housing, anything with new construction would require a new foundation. We did, we are, would like to continue to evaluate whether it could be used for parking lot and/or potentially solar installation bases, looking at any other potential use of that existing concrete as it is, but when it comes to new buildings, it's very unlikely that that could be reused. And so, the reclamation of that and the unknowns is one of the big discussion items that we had with a lot of people, particularly to the people who are familiar with the site, the local developers. This was the number one challenge that they see with developing the site is the unknown and the extent of the concrete when it is known. The second set of observations here are related to access and we interviewed, in addition to the development community, we interviewed public safety, public safety staff here at the city and we know that access and emergency services is very important to the city council and so, we really wanted to make sure that this particular voice was heard in this process. And some of the observations or things that we've heard are related to it being very challenging to serve this from, from an emergency perspective because there's only one at-grade intersection that's usable right now and that in order to maximize the access, a separated overpass would be needed and that that is very costly and probably, and definitely not going to be covered by the development industry. And so, pursuing resource as a city would be one thing that kind of comes out of this. And we'll also extend the amount of time it will take to develop the site. We do think there are some uses that could be considered on the site before that second access, but that it's important to plan for that overpass, at least from a public safety perspective. There are also needs for ongoing utility upgrades. Again, this is not news to you, you've been looking at some projects associated with utility installation there and the trail and unknown, unknown concrete is one thing that's come up in those projects, so that kind of is consistent with some of the concerns. And that in order to provide the best public safety support here, there might need to be creative solutions. And some of those creative solutions we'll talk about later, but there was a desire for potentially a substation or something where there could be some, you know, equipment or some service provided right on the site. And then in terms of environmental and regulatory observations, this mostly came up with regard when we were talking to the DNR and other regulators that do govern the site in terms of permitting in the waterway and in the shoreline overlay area, but that floodplain and shoreline restrictions will be in place for development on this site. Again, I don't think that's news. You, as part of a trail project, you really looked at maintaining a buffer there to accommodate for that. In terms of the discussion of the docks, there's a potential use for temporary docks or day use docks there, but permanent docks or docks that would be rented overnight for private use is less likely to be permitted. Again, till you make that application, you don't know for sure, but that's what we've been, that's what we've heard in preliminary discussions. And then, again, back to just the extent of it, environmental remediation is unknown at this time and that's mostly related to the concrete. And then, the state historic preservation office will also be involved in this if you want to reuse the existing building on the site because it is a historical building. And then lastly, for my section on observations, this is really the market and development observations. This is a huge part of what we heard from the developing community. And again, most of this is probably not going to be surprising to you, interest rates and construction costs and labor costs have made development in general very difficult right now and that's kind of universal across the economy. However, there are certain markets where it's harder, where the rents or the, the sales price for housing or for retail, industrial, those rents aren't equivalent to the cost to construct the debt service on those buildings. And so, it's hard to get investors in a, in a project where the rents won't cover the debt service. And so, that is an issue on the site, whether it's residential or, or retail. And so, we concluded that, that the rent that would be able to be generated from either of those uses on the site would not be viable without significant government participation. The developers felt like the site was overall unusable for, unsuitable for housing because of the frequency, the speed and the length of the trains that go through that site. And so, obviously you have the access issue, but you also have the livability issue with the train being so close. And so, there was general consensus among the development community that housing was not going to be easy to do if, if viable at all. And with regard to retail, the, just given the factors that the retail development community looks for, particularly volume of traffic, cars driving by, retail's a very opportunistic land use and so, needing a high volume of traffic with good visibility or opportunity for signage is something that retailers look for and generally concluded that this wasn't probably the best site for retail compared to other places in your community. And as it relates to master development, which would be a developer buying the whole piece and breaking it up over phases and doing the cleanup over time, that that was probably not likely, at least in the near-term market. Most of the developers we talked to that do master development are, are not doing it at all right now, let alone on this site, given the unknowns and the challenges. So, as we move into recommendations, you'll hear some of the response and our interpretation of this information that we heard in Danielle's part. So, with that, I'll turn it over.
Thank you, Breann. My name's Danielle Probst, I'm a planner and project manager with ISG. We're a multidisciplinary architecture, engineering and planning firm and our role in this project really is to take what we heard and figure out what do we do with that and what is the vision then for the Mill District site. I'm kind of moving into some of those findings and interpretations based off of that. City pre-development estimate of around 25 to 30 million dollars needed for infrastructure, overpass, concrete cleanup, parcelling, site preparation and more is our initial kind of finding based off of this. And that's based off some of those estimates that we received from those excavator companies, Ramsey and Rachel companies and then also recent overpasses that we've seen in the region. Knowing that this is just kind of a baseline estimate, not official by any means, but this is our best guess at this moment as we dig in further on this site. It is our recommendation and our, our observation that immediate development is possible on the existing church parking lot and we recognize this is outside of the current scope of the Mill District site, but it is a very opportunistic site. It's the most visible, the, the barriers to redevelopment there are lesser compared to the Mill District site. And so, that is one of the conclusions that we generated based off those stakeholder meetings is that immediate development is possible on that existing church parking lot site. And we also engage with the church during the stakeholder meetings as well. Digging into some potential uses that we've investigated and discovered so far, destination and recreation parks, really drawing people to the river and using that site, build to suit light industrial, so we know that there's a BNSF rail line that runs through that site. Is there a way that we can leverage that for a portion of the site for a light industrial property or it could be, could be a light industrial property, a data center or something along those lines? Artisan and creative spaces, that was also a recognized need based off some of those stakeholder meetings and then small business incubators. And so, kind of wrapping that up and the demand exists for some of those artisan spaces and event-friendly facilities, including using a portion of that building that is currently on the site would be potentially feasible for some of those event-oriented pieces. So, if we think about kind of what we're recommending as a phase one is kind of a, a current redevelopment scenario and then thinking through phase two as we work towards an overpass, which would be that 10 to 15-year horizon. And we've laid out a few options here that could be a combination of use options, thinking through the Mill District site. And then, you'll also see kind of a, a number of variables that are addressed too and what each of these use options kind of fall into when we're thinking about those variables. So, one of those use options is a public park or destination recreation, so drawing people to the, the site, enhancing that and then using the riverfront. Option two is light industrial or data center for a portion of the site and then also option three is that events are a component. So, looking through some of these kind of variables or factors that are considered into each of this, you'll see public investment needed, a timeline, risk to the city, partners needed, partners needed being both public and private and regulatory partners that would be needed for that investment and for that redevelopment option, tax base generated, those opportunities there and then single access flexibility. So, as we work towards a overpass or a secondary, not at-grade access, what are some flexibilities that we have with the current single access with the BNSF rail line that is part of that site? The site, cement mitigation required, so is there a way that we can kind of piecemeal some of those mitigation requirements or parcel it out and take an incremental approach to that and what would that look like? And then also looking at parking demands as well. So, these are some of those phase one use options if we think about kind of a phase one, phase two approach. And then I will give it to Jeff to kind of wrap up and chat through some summaries.
As a team, we looked at this and we go, "You've got to kid me, they're paying us to come and deliver bad news, what kind of deal is that?" But it's not all bad news because there's some things we really want you to take away. There are definitely some challenges, whether it's market challenges, whether it's access challenges, whether it's challenges because of the rail, they're all real challenges. And unfortunately, there's not a lot you can do about it. We've talked to the rail, we've talked to the local people, we talked to the national real estate people. To put two means of egress, ingress, egress into that site is going to be difficult, basically impossible, is kind of what we've concluded. And if you take a look at housing, for instance, Breann talked about this and the housing developers saying, "Look, housing people don't want to be next to the sound of a rail, they don't want the vibration of the rail, they need access and it's going to be difficult to put housing there." So, you kind of have the have-nots and the haves. The have-nots are to the west of the rail line, we're going to talk about that. The haves are to the east of the rail, well, that's not part of our assignment, that's the church property. But the reality is that's the most valuable property, that's the opportunity that exists most clearly. There are opportunities, as Danielle just talked about, on the east side or the west side of the rail line, but they're related to things that don't have heavy traffic. So, we've talked about an event center, we've talked about some light industrial and so forth. So, let's move to some of those opportunities. We've talked about, well, you could add another vehicle access to the site, it seems cost prohibitive, it's extensive to add that kind of a, a access to that west side of the, of the tracks. We've talked about the church parking lot, church is certainly interested in being a part of any redevelopment opportunity from what they've communicated to us. That's something that maybe we should be talking about more about, is it more about as it continues to evolve. We talked about an event space, something that would be more seasonal most likely, but potentially around a little bit, but you wouldn't need access all the time. You could kind of work around a single access, it was, if it was shut down for a period of time, but you could maybe plan around that. Same with light industrial, if you have a light industrial user or a data center, they would not necessarily have tight schedules, would not necessarily need a lot of vehicle traffic, they need personnel traffic, but not a lot of vehicle traffic. It would be limited and those are things that potentially could work. We also talked about how do you balance, given the prohibitive costs of putting another vehicle access into the site, what do you balance or how do you balance the site? We said, you know, there's a lot of discussion that should probably be given to creating pedestrian access through a skyway. You could have potentially a parking ramp on the church parking lot, but then allows you through a skyway to get people across the track so that you have that access to people. You have the parking then on the east side, then people would have access through a skyway to the west side, where then they could service the business that were over there. So, we talked about that as well. Some of the retail, you go, "Boy, what a great site for an event center and a brew pub or something, wouldn't that be awesome in the summer?" Yeah, it would be awesome in the summer. Unfortunately, the summer is five months out of the year. And so, then you go, "Okay, what do these retailers do during the rest of the season?" Well, it's pretty tough, pretty limited and that's why we really landed more on the event center, would be something that could potentially work. And if you did it right, it would have a meaningful use during the year, probably not as much during the winter, but it's possible that you would. But any of a retail type use is going to be limited with the seasonality and that makes it difficult for a retailer. So, with that, I don't know how we did, we're actually probably a little bit ahead, ahead of schedule on our presentation, but that's good because we wanted to leave a lot of time, being that this is a draft, we wanted to leave a lot of time for discussion. I'm sure you have some questions for us, this is the perfect time to do that if you'll allow us that time. And so, we'd like to throw it up for questions at this point.
Perfect, thank you. Council, guessing a number of us have some questions, if anyone wants to start, can just start going back and forth and then I think that'll naturally lead us into some I'll start. You talked about, sorry, I think it was Breann, you talked about, mentioned an overpass was a constraint for public safety. Is that also a constraint for developers or was that more guided at public safety constraint?
I'll start it and I'll be play-by-play and you can be color commentary. So, it's, it's really a cost constraint, number one. It's a significant cost, we're hearing numbers of 20 million dollars estimated and to look at a payback on that, we actually ran some tax calculations on the different development options and based upon their proportion, their share and tax base they would have to recover that kind of investment, it doesn't even look feasible that you'd recover that kind of investment, let alone find the money to do something like that. So, even if you had the access, that doesn't take away from the seasonality of the retail and it doesn't take away from the concerns of multifamily developers with the noise, the vibration and so forth. So, those were some constraints that we said, "You know what, you could get around that, you could knock down that red flag," but I'm not so sure that we knocked it down for anything that's going to be ultimately meaningful for the development of the site.
I don't know if you're recording, are you recording?
I just would add that I asked specifically to the developers, I had a questionnaire, so I asked them all the same questions to make sure I didn't forget anything and I asked them, "Is it, is the site access a bigger deal than, than the other components of the train, right?" Like, sure, site access is an issue, but there's these other components of a train. So, if you remove the site access, you still have the, the market challenges with the train.
With the train. And how many did you ask?
We had 11, I think.
Okay.
10.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we did talk to a couple of like specialty develop, like solar, that they wouldn't have commented on that, yeah.
Maybe we'll stay on the train. We've had, since acquiring the property and probably even before, similar conversations of, there's train traffic that goes through there, you know, the BNSF, it's a main line from Chicago to the northwest. Yet, a lot of other communities also have been built on train tracks. We know that Stock Rapids, St. Cloud both have significant housing along those same tracks. When we say that there's a, not sure the words used, but, but there's a lack of desire would be my term from housing developers, is that for all housing or is it a certain level of housing? So, high-end condos wouldn't desire that, but we possibly could get density with a different level of housing?
So, let me try our best to answer that and we can add to it. You know, it's frustrating because it's a beautiful site, beautiful site to the river and you can think of all the potential to have those views to the river and so forth. The reason the track runs through there is because it was a heavy industrial use at one time and that would be still true today. It could be a good heavy industrial use and I know that's not what you want right now, but that's why that track is there. But you have, if you put housing in there, the housing developers said, "Look, there's lots of land in Sartell and we don't have to work on remediation of any cement."
Sure.
We don't have to work with these other concerns that people have, they're closer to the core and walkability of amenities. And so, it really doesn't make sense for us ideally, based upon what else is available in the community and other sites.
So, I might play that into more of a market dynamic of available land elsewhere could command a similar price. And at this point, the access to the river isn't a high enough opportunity for them to overcome that, is that fair?
I think that's fair, it's, you know, again, it's great views and that, but it's not exclusive.
Yeah.
There are other sites in the city that allow those kinds of things that are closer to the core in many cases. And then you don't have to deal with the cost of the additional land costs essentially because of the cement that's got to be remediated, remediated on the site.
So, you're talking about some of the challenges from cement remediation as well as access. If those two were solved and you asked the same questions to each of these parties, what would their response be? Right? Because that, that really gives me idea of what the use of the property could be. We already knew those issues existed prior, so.
So, I'm glad you asked that. I have a client that I'm working with right now in a similar city with a similar lot and I'm not working on that lot, but I got to talk to them about it. They have remediated the site. It was a former dairy on, on the river. They have remediated the site and they have come after, I would say several years, they did several failed RFPs for development, they've come to the conclusion that they're going to have to take an active role in this financially and from a public-private partnership. So, I, I was just, it was a very similar project and I can, I can share you the details afterwards or whatnot, but they were like, "Okay, it's dirty, we got to clean up, we got to get all the cement out." And they did and they got a grant from the, from the state to do that and they spent their own money to do that too. And it was, just wasn't quite enough because of the rents, right? So, you also have this market constraint with the amount of rent you have to charge, whether it's residential or industrial or commercial, to bear the cost of the cost to construct and the debt service to pay that construction. So, that is another constraint and I think they came to realize that just as a city, they're going to have to take a much, more active role. So, I'll just, I'll just stop there as the case study and I'm happy to share the details and connect you with, with them if that's of interest.
So, Breann, before you walk away though, in your, we shared the responsibilities of talking to the developers, but Breann talked to most of them, which is why it's really good to get her insight. But I think we did hear, in fact, I don't think, I know we heard, that some developers said, "You know, the church site, because it has two means of e-access, could actually be the, could have potential as a site for multifamily." But you still have some concerns with the rail, one of them was Opus and I'm the one that talked to Opus and Opus said, "You know, we're doing a site in Idina right now by the rail and we're finding that's being, becoming a limiting constraint for us." It's an objection that we have to really try to deal with, that we wish we didn't have that objection.
Sure.
So, he said, "It's not impossible to overcome, but the church site would be the better site because of the e-access standpoint. You can't put in underground parking, which is always nice to have because of the water tables, but, but from an access standpoint..." But but from an access standpoint, at least you can deal with that issue and still may maybe having multifamily work. That's fair comment, right?
Absolutely. It wasn't that it could never be done. It was that in the final report will have, here are the four things the city will have to do in order to do it, right? So to your point, clean up the site, get some pre-development going, offer some incentives, sure, then it could it could have some housing. We just wanted to also provide you with kind of the market, the the most marketable options for you. But yes, I think that the the constraints were just high. And the church site does not have buried concrete that anyone knows of. It's been graded and flat, it's underutilized. And um and so that's why I was more, oh, maybe, maybe a a housing project could go there. That seems a little bit easier, less of a barrier. There were, there was one developer we talked to in particular that said, certainly we need to dig into it more, right? Uh they would wanna do a market study and they would wanna look at the housing on the river next to the railroad tracks and what those prices are. They would, so he admitted, like, we need to do, we would need to do a little bit more analysis to determine what the prices would have to be to ju- to be able to, you know, and what the rents or the sales prices would be on those homes. Um in order to say no for sure, because he said, oh, I'd be curious in what other neighborhoods are out there and what other new development has happened along the river and or by the railroad tracks. So certainly a little more analysis would be needed, but these were sort of their first impressions.
As we talk with developers, um like you mentioned, you talked to ten-ish developers, uh both local and national, regional, are there any um any differences or different perspectives that you could offer between the two different groups? As they think about this site?
I think it was interesting because in talking to the nationals, it felt like we were getting a broader perspective perhaps of multiple product types that could work on the site. The local developers were a little bit more defined, but it was still helpful, certainly from their perspectives. Some of them had a history with it that maybe became a barrier.
Yeah.
Just in the conversation right out of the shoe, where the national people that weren't as familiar with it were a little bit more open minded. We needed to describe it a little bit more and and really could push back maybe a little bit more. But I think all the perspectives, we gained from all of the perspectives, but we really tried to round out the developers that we talked to. So we're looking at retail, we're looking at industrial, we're looking at multifamily, single family in some cases. So we were trying to get a perspective from all of them because we felt that would make us smarter as well to help us make a better decision. I think certainly the opportunity when we talk about market constraints, some of the multifamily people, they've really struggled of late because of increased interest rates, because of material costs, because there are starting to be the the vacancy rates are actually starting to increase with some of the multifamily and that's put some constraints on some of them. But the one that we really as a team agree with from a a new opportunity is the industrial side. Whether it's high tech of some sort, um some of the things that you're trying to do are med tech, given the regional health center that you are. That seemed like that could have some real merit to it. And a lot of the med tech, if we could get the the people, the pedestrian side across the tracks through some kind of a skyway, that potentially would have some merit. It generates some great revenue from a tax base, creates some, creates some great jobs. And they wouldn't need a lot of truck traffic for deliveries. And if you had the parking on the east side of the tracks, you then address the pedestrian or the employee parking. So that was one that we said from a return on investment as far as creating a tax base, that is has some real merit that should be further investigated.
The other use, I would say that the developers were most energized by was a multipurpose event center or recreation and or recreation. This notion that you have the river, this is the main asset here, how can we foster recreation? And we knew, we what we think going in, having the whole thing as a park is maybe not your, you know, top choice. And so how can we partner with a group of of uh recreation-based businesses potentially? That's a really creative and would take a lot of work and innovation. But I think to me, when I when I see this site, because recreation is more destination, right? You go there for a purpose. It's not something you're you um necessarily reliant to be at. If there's a train going by, you wait, basically. Um and so so that's, that was the other use, not necessarily from an ROI and a tax base generation, but from the developing community saying, yeah, that that could really leverage the asset of this property.
And you all presented that in that chart. We encourage you to go back and really study that. What we're talking about again, just to be clear, is we're talking about the west side, the site that you guys control as potential development. So we're saying, yes, it could be parked. Of course, everybody wants the park and it doesn't generate income and we've heard that in every meeting, every time we get involved with the city, you know, that's front and center. We get that. Um but the event center has some opportunity, but the industrial site also has some opportunity on the west side. If you can figure out pedestrian access over the trail, over the tracks. And so that is something that, again, just um probably would warrant some further investigation. It wouldn't take the whole site. So there'd still be room for potentially event center or still be room for green space for park to activate it for the community. But it is something that seemed to make sense on on your particular site.
As far as an industrial user, would would we still be responsible for that concrete remediation, the two to three million dollars you said that would take?
Yes, but it's a lot less than the second access point. And so now you say responsible, I I mean, are there funds available that that uh we could help you find and working with your staff to find? Maybe, but it's gonna need to be remediated because the developer's going, look, why would I build on this site? If I've got a two to three million dollar extra cost, I could just build down the road, right?
I I agree completely. I was gonna say, I mean, I I don't know how the rest of the council feels. I just, I feel like this is a whole lot of bad news. Like, there's not much good we can do with this problem.
Outside of having another park.
I have been in the industry, the commercial real estate industry for thirty-six years. And I've seen a lot of bad news. And I will tell you, in almost every project, especially the big projects that that I work on or we work on as a company, there's some bad news somewhere along the line. I will tell you that innovation starts with bad news. Just think about that for a second. There's some bad news, but there's a chance opportunity. You have a site that's on the river that if we could figure it out, could be beautiful for the right use. But it's gonna create some innovation and it's gonna start by getting access. And whether that's a sky bridge over the the rail to get people in, there's, it's gonna create some, you have to be innovative to figure it out because it's not a hundred percent clear. It's not a green space site that's a hundred percent clear. But there is an opportunity, just have to find the right opportunity. And I know that may not initially align with what you originally thinking.
Follow up on that. Um in regards to the site mediation, I know that there's a lot of brown site funds available, but this doesn't qualify. We're kind of stuck in in a corner, if you will, because if if I if I understand, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, this is not a brown site type development. This is just a concrete issue and does that get remediation funds from the government or opportunities to help fund that?
I do not think it's a designated federal superfund site. Um or I don't think it's a state brown designated brownfield site.
I didn't think so.
It doesn't qualify for either.
There are re- resources, but they're not gonna match the cost. And so there are tools that the city can use to, and and we would recommend it be done incrementally too. Uh and you were doing it for the trail project incrementally, right? We don't know what we're gonna get. And so we start digging for a trail. Then, you know, unfortunately, that requires more resource and more funding for that project. But um as we move forward, if we get direction from you tonight, like, let's move forward with one of these three options. Yeah, we wanna explore maybe a light industrial or a combo use something. Then um a phasing plan would be, yeah, a concept with a phasing plan. So we recommend starting with this, biting off, what's the least infrastructure, what's the least remediation we can do to get some shovel ready? I know that's a trademarked term, but some shovel ready sites here. What's the least amount of investment we can make? But yeah, between grants, which are limited and the city's support, that's that pre-development work, infrastructure, concrete remediation, uh that that will be um, we recommend that the city take the lead on that.
And Brianne, what about TIP as a possible way of tool to help cover some additional costs?
Yes, you did a light study. Good news. So um it is eligible for redevelopment TIP, which is the best kind of tax increment financing. So that's good news. You have that tool available. Um however, you know, that there's risk associated to the city with using that tool. Um so but certainly as we come back and we go to the next phase of this and develop a concept in a phasing and and uh financing kind of ideas for that, that will be a tool that we discuss. Um depending on what kind of uses. I mean, if you do a public park use, then that's not a tool available. Or if you have a publicly owned event center, that's, it's not gonna be a tool necessarily available. So it really depends on the concept and the direction you provide tonight as to what kinds of financial tools are available.
And I'm following you on the light industrial or or industrial use that could be copacetic with green space, a small event space, um a destination. Obviously, you need a destination attraction to bring people into a dead end park. I mean, you have to have an event. You're not just gonna get drive-by traffic that retailers divide or just make decisions on or or provide restaurant. You're gonna have to have a destination event center that draws people to the site with the amenities. But if you can get an industrial user that is somewhat, like I said, copacetic with the use of the recreational park area, great. I think that, you know, we could easily combine those two into a win-win. Did you talk to the rail line as far as a spur opportunity there? Is that an opportunity for an industrial use to potentially use the rail line?
Well, you see a spur, but the rail comes right to the site. So type, you know, the BNSF would say, man, if we could activate it again with another heavy industrial user. When I say light industrial user, they're typically not a rail user. So a heavy industrial user, if we could activate it again, we'd do that in a heartbeat. I mean, they they'd be thrilled to increase the revenue coming off the tracks. But that's not what you guys have wanted. And quite frankly, there's, you know, with the health center, the regional health center that you're establishing, there is a real opportunity for light industrial, a med tech type building, a flex type building, if you will. But they're typically not going to be a rail user.
Okay, but there is potentially there uh opportunity for a rail user to be attracted to the site?
I think that uh industrial is growing. Industrial is certainly, the demand is good there. I always say when we start with a development opportunity, there's one question we need to ask. And that is, is there demand today and in the foreseeable future? And if the answer is no, that's the end of the discussion. Don't spend any more time on it. Because at the end of the day, the opportunity is created because of the demand and that changes in the marketplace. So is there demand for heavy industrial users? Is manufacturing growing? Uh it is. And so we have not really pursued that because most of the interest has been on the distribution or light industrial site. Right now, it's not a distribution site. It's a light industrial
Right.
manufacturing or light assembly type site. But could a heavy industrial user be interested? It's possible.
I know you're scared of that term, heavy industrial, because you pictured just this ginormous industrial user there, but um the, if you could find the right partnership between the two, I think there's a payoff to circumvent some of that hurdles and roadblocks.
Yeah, I think the challenge with that heavy industrial, especially one that's gonna uh utilize rail is that it's either their inbound or outbound product is what will go on rail. Seldomly will we find, will you find someone that's going to inbound raw material in on the rail and outbound finished goods on the rail? Um and so then we're introducing the truck traffic with a single access point which offers continued constraints there. I'm not saying it's impossible, but I I do think it will be a continued challenge from a heavy industrial that's going to leverage rail.
You could probably do some analysis around that too. We did some analysis from a tax base. If you did a light industrial, what does that investment look like and what kind of tax bases it generate? You could also do it with heavy industrial. Then you could also do it with the jobs and say, okay, what jobs, on average, what do the jobs look like for light industrial type jobs versus heavy manufacturing jobs? What does that look like to the economy of Sartell? So you could do some analysis around all of that too. But the majority of the demand today is in the light industrial and the distribution site. What are you talking about industrial?
If you were gonna paint a picture of what that looks like to us on that site, I mean, are you painting a data center picture or are you painting random general light industrial?
Data centers are probably the strongest demand right now. They don't have a lot of people. They're very expensive facilities that bring a nice tax base with them. They don't generate a lot of income into the community because they don't have a lot of jobs necessarily. The jobs that are there are good paying jobs. So it's a lot of property tax, if you will. There are some things that we would need to work through. There are some sensitivities with some data centers with vibration. So the rail would be a limiting factor to them. Light industrial seems to be a better fit potentially because um but but I don't know that we know that answer completely. We just know that there's demand in both of those areas. And in light industrial jobs where there's a lot, you know, whether they're a med tech manufacturer of some sort, um it just, there's demand. It's a growth area and it's continued to be a growth area for a long time as our population continues to age. So that's, those are the areas that we don't necessarily have to say today, yeah, it's gonna be this kind of demand or industrial use. But we have to say it's most likely, given the demand and the and the parameters of the limiting factors of the site, that's probably where we should be fishing, right? That's where we should be looking and see what comes, what comes to the surface. And what does that look like? Is that a heavy industrial user and then make a decision or is it a light industrial user? Um all of those, it's tough to say specifically who it would be.
One other topic, and then I think we probably need to get into next steps since we've got thirteen minutes before we open up the council. You've talked a lot about, or a couple of different times about a skyway, pedestrian walkway. Uh can you shed any light on that, BNSF's thought of that, having a overpass for pedestrians while also having maintaining the existing access point?
Yeah, so that was something that we've um said, you know, there are many factors or many locations where they essentially have created a structured parking and then created a skyway into the the adjacent building or the adjacent property. And so could you take um a structured parking and then put a skyway in that essentially through an elevator comes off on the other side and and potentially then works from a standpoint of getting people to this site whenever they need to and and work from an employee standpoint, make sure that my employees get access whenever they need to. And the answer is yes. And that would be a fraction of what it would cost to put in vehicle access. What does it look like? We have not gone to the lengths to go, okay, BNSF, what does this look like for you? What would be the steps to do it? What would be the cost to put this structured parking in in the skyway? We have not gone to those steps.
Mayor, um I'll just add on to that, that um we do know it's allowed. You just have to have the height. Um and we were, you know, if there's guidance today that, hey, let's explore that a little bit more. Um the Initiative Foundation has actually reached out and and they have a grant available right now where we could do a feasibility report for both a drivable overpass and a pedestrian overpass. Um from an economic resiliency perspective of just understanding, where's the best location? How would that look? You know, what's the height restrictions, BNSF, all of those things. Um and I think that would help us place on the site in any potential right of way. The other item I wanted to follow up with Councilmember Ellen is regarding brownfields. Um not a brownfield site, not a super uh site, and we would not be eligible for either. The next potential funding would be related to um concrete removal and redevelopment of the site, but it requires, and it's through deed, but it requires that it's led by the developer. And so you have to have a developer locked in who is leading that effort and then we come in alongside and and we're able to secure funding. And so if there was a light industrial or, you know, a data center or something that we said, hey, we wanna go after that tax base while also focusing on creating this destination and recreational amenity, I think there is some viable potential there to help support that developer on concrete removal and getting some funding, but you have to have that developer identified. Um obviously, you've all been hearing the news around data centers. It seems like a really, if we can tuck it in the right spot here, it seems like the limited amount of vehicle traffic, it could be a a good option or some of these med tech innovation options of just how do we generate enough tax base while also focusing on, it seemed to me as we were going through this that we need to create a destination. That destination is what is going to drive, I mean, Mayor Fitz, you kind of said it, like, it's it's what's gonna drive the developers to come. It's just not there yet. And so how do we get enough tax base to kind of keep things going while creating that destination feel? Um and so trying to find that right developer that could go after funding.
When you think about the deed option, is that a a one and done request? Uh meaning, get the grant to remediate, but once we do that for the Uh meaning get the grant to remediate, but once we do that for the uh potential single use, then it's done? Cuz my mind's going to, there's probably not a developer that wants to develop the whole site, right? And so.
No, it's each developer would apply for it. And that's, you know, from Brienne's point, that's where parcelling this out and not having a master development could be really.
Okay.
Critical for us.
Could be a phased approach?
It's applied for by the developer. So if it's a, you know, each developer would apply for each, let's say you did two acre sites and. Um and I do believe we have strong support. I mean, you know, like from the, from our representatives to take that route. But it's just biting off a little bit of it, of it at a time. Um both from a timeline perspective, we wanna get moving on the site. We don't wanna wait ten to fifteen years till we can put an overpass. Um but it also allows us to take it in chunks from a financial perspective too.
Yep, agree. Uh Jeff, I'll maybe kick it back to you to make sure we're giving you direction on the specific items you need. We've got eight minutes. Um we'll try and be concise.
I think we would appreciate hearing from you collectively as mayor and council members. Of the things that we've presented, the options we've presented, which has the most appeal to you. Both from an economic development standpoint and just overall for the community.
Council, they presented a lot. Is there uh maybe one item that we don't want them to pursue? Yeah, I think you had one more slide that, there you go. There are certain areas we, we strongly bump into or, or uh is it easier to disqualify some of the options?
I mean, I, I don't know who you're gonna get to develop the event center and I don't think that's a business the city wants to go into. So I, I would, I would eliminate the event center.
And when you're saying event center, are you saying a broad open canvas or are you saying a specific use case event center?
One of the developers we talked to runs an event center, the Solar Arts Building in Minneapolis. And what they have done in that building successfully is they have a boot pub. They have an event center that they rent out for weddings and graduations and so forth. And then they have an art gallery. And during the time that the event center is open, the art gallery, the artists are there. And they've had great success with renting spaces to artists. Um and so that becomes part of the event center. So it's an attraction. It's something that is a destination point essentially, if you will. And they said, yeah, there's no reason why something like that couldn't work. And there has been some interest in the community, specifically talking to Anna about something like that. So it'd be in combination. It's certainly not gonna pull its weight from a tax standpoint, but it does create potentially some tax and creates, becomes more of a destination point.
I would agree with you. I don't, we as a city don't wanna be in an event business. Uh but the one s- building still standing there, I think, has opportunity with its proximity to the river. And its historic designation to potentially be some type of ev- event center. Again, that would be a sell-off, um not something I don't, that the city would want to be part of, but.
And that, this would also be an option for multi-use facility.
Okay.
So certainly not, you're probably right, the developer is not gonna come in, build it and take all the risk. But it might be an option for a public-private partnership where there's risk sharing there and the timing and the cost. And then potentially leases or partnerships with users, if that makes sense.
And operated by one of those users.
Potentially, yes.
Sure. Um data center, when we think about, you made a great point on uh the vibration of the tracks. I actually think that a data center there would help us not remediate the foundation that's there. You can't have a paper machine vibrating while in use. That is why we have significant concrete in the ground. There might be a play uh for that as well. I mean, I, so I guess, Council, I would say I would rather us not remove a data center option. Um because it might help us in two fronts.
I guess my question would be, and I, I don't know the answer to this, when you read about data centers, da- data centers, you. They're massive facilities that is what they're building these days. Is there a po- is there enough room on this for, to have? Is it justifiable?
And I think you have different sizes of data centers. And certainly they're becoming larger because of the impact of artificial intelligence and so forth. But most of what you read about are the major users that are front and center in the data center, the artificial intelligence business. And that's what's really driving. But there are also banks and others that are very much need data centers that may not be the same size. So I think from our standpoint, if you decide a direction you wanna go, let's say potentially data centers or potentially industrial, light industrial, heavy industrial. I think that you need to figure out, okay, today we're identifying the barriers, if you will, to success. What barriers can we try to address to try to remove those as best possible? And then create awareness and let the market tell us what's the best fit for there. Because you don't always know, but as long as it's along the lines of industrial or data center, then let's figure out who's good, who has that interest. But let's at least remove those barriers so that we can have success.
And Mayor Fitz, um cuz I know we're short on time, we do have a roundtable option at the end of the next special meeting workshop. And maybe council could, you know, kinda digest this a little bit. And then at that point, staff can collect some notes that we can then give back to the IAG team of, you know, of those options. Which ones are yay and nay? Um the only other thing I would add is that if there's a, a willingness and a tolerance and a interest um in data centers. If you've been following any of the information out there, there's not been a, a wide acceptance. Um mostly because of the locations that they've been going in. And so for, if the city were to embrace that, I think you would have a long line of interested parties. Because of, not many are embracing that and this could be a unique location for a data center that most cities don't have available. Um so just something to think about as far as demand. Um a lot of cities are not really exploring that option right now. Um and this site poses an interesting opportunity that I think would draw a lot of interest.
Uh perfect. Let's, we will bump this and give better feedback to you.
Good.
Uh following, um later tonight we have another workshop. And then the data center, I think we need to have further discussion because I think our residents might line up.
Yeah.
Um and we need to be careful or thoughtful on what we're considering there.
One other quick note before we leave you is that we did anticipate or project that you could put about a two-hundred-thousand square foot industrial building on the site. It would take thirteen to fifteen acres and still leave you for room for an event center or green space. So it's not going to take the whole site.
Excellent. We appreciate all of uh your team and your hard work on this and uh the partnership that's been created. Thank you.
Thanks.
Council, I will uh look for a motion to adjourn our special workshop.
So move.
Is there a motion in a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.